Okay, it's six o'clock. We'll call today's meeting to order. We'll start off as usual with the reading of the mission statement. Excuse me, I'll just leave. Start with pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome everybody here today. We have a few people joining us in the audience. What is Joanne Knight from Ford County EcoDevo. Daniel Teague from Sunflower Community Garden. There, okay. And Molly.
Wayne Scott.
Wayne Scott, sorry, from Ford County Development as well. So, thank you. Thank you all for being here. I'll read the college mission statement. Dodge City Community College will provide opportunities for high-quality learning and will enhance community and personal development in a student-centered environment. And we open the floor to remarks from the audience. Seeing none, we'll continue. Next on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We have three sets to approve. And I will entertain a motion when ready.
I move to approve all three.
Second? Motion second, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, completion of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
We all have revised agendas as received. And we added three personnel items, nine, 10, and 11.
Okay.
And those are also interested.
Nine, 10, 11. So, if you've already brought their board book, go ahead and switch over. We'll switch over to the handout agenda.
I'd like to add item nine, personnel item number nine, to the executive session.
Personnel items, is that personnel in?
Personnel item number nine.
In a consent?
It is in a consent.
Okay, so you want to take Carla, the new item number nine? And move that to executive session?
Yes.
Okay, and I would like to add in new business. Business concerning a governance committee. We'll have that in new business. Okay, so is there any other additions or deletions? To the agendas? Seeing none, I'll take approval of the agenda as revised. So move. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Next up, we'll move to the reports to the trustees. So, Student Governance Association.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Mr. Chairperson, and President Nolte. I just want to say it's always good to see you. Because, I don't know, I just, I don't know if no one's ever told you this, but I, we appreciate you as a president. And because most of the time, every time you see somebody, you always greet them with such happiness and enthusiasm. I don't, I think it's always good to let people know. For tonight, we're going to start off with our Student Government Association. We finally have our official staff. And I'm very excited to start with them. Our marketing chair is Matthew Hayes, of course. He's a very bright kid whose mom is in the audience right now. Now, I know where he get his brightness from. Courtney Turner will be our co-activities and marketing chair. Savannah Cox will be our data director. Gregorio Valdez, our new vice president. And Andrea Strata, our activities chair, and myself as your president. Our activities that we had last week was suicide prevention week, all through the 10th and the 14th, all through, from 10th through the 14th. On Monday, we had the sidewalk chalk and a little lawn. I don't know if you noticed, on the sidewalks, there were a lot of beautiful messages from the students. And it's amazing how engaged our college was on that. It was great to see all the beautiful art and sweet messages. Tuesday, the 11th, was our yellow ribbon week. It was just to get ribbons, to put them in your cars. It was really sweet. Wednesday, the 12th, we had, we were giving out free coffee and just having a chat with students who needed somebody to talk to. And also writing cute messages on rocks. In case people were looking down, they would see sweet messages, you know. And on Thursday, we were doing random acts of kindness by writing sweet things on a piece of paper. And we were just going to give them throughout the week. Then, we also had a glow room that day. And homecoming free eliminations were also that day. On Friday, we had a photo booth and a raffle ticket. We had a few students win some really cool prizes. This Monday was Constitution Day. They, also students were winning prizes and getting knowledge, taking pictures. Wednesday was, I mean Tuesday, I'm sorry. Tuesday, the 18th, where you were doing posters for Hype Night for our homecoming candidates. And on Friday, I mean Wednesday, I'm sorry. Wednesday, we were doing our final voting for homecoming. And we were also giving our free T-shirts for the students. It was first come, first served. So, everybody, we had a huge line that day. And our game is tomorrow. So, if you want to come out and support us, the game, I believe starts at 6:00. We're playing against Butler. And we will also have our coronation, our crowning for fall 2018. And so, that's, those are our news for today. And I appreciate you guys, and I hope you have a good evening. Thank you. Oh, and remember, Dr. Nolte mentioned the pageant that I had. It's Sunday. So, if you guys would like to spell bye and cheer on me. Thank you.
Well, good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Sompares. Thank you. Okay, we'll go on to trustees' reports. So, I think we'll start with Terry.
In an effort to keep the meeting short, I don't have any.
Mr. Chairman, may I use his time?
For the sake of keeping the meeting short? Go ahead.
Well, there are several things I do want to mention. One is kudos to students. And the reports that they gave us ahead of time and then that we just heard are exciting. And it leaves you with the reason why we're here. And I really want them to know that, oh, I really want them to know that we appreciate that. And special thanks to the students and the International Club, who hosted the wonderful concert and presentation in three acts that we saw, Kathy and I saw, in the theater a couple of nights ago. It was tremendous. It was outstanding. And I would hope that the community foundation and United Way realize what an impact that can make on the community. And I'm so glad it was at the college. So, I encourage them to consider doing it again. Because it wasn't really what we expected to see, and we didn't know what it was going to be. And I hope that it can happen again, because it was really very unusual and outstanding. I want to mention again that RSVP that the college sponsors is a federally funded organization that we don't really emphasize enough because of the things that they do in the community. And I wish that it were called Volunteer Center instead of Retired Senior Volunteers, because there are a lot of people who are not retired seniors who are out doing things, including our students. Our students have been out painting houses and cleaning up yards and doing things for people that need work on their homes. We really need to appreciate it. And one of the special things they do is volunteer drivers take patients and business appointments to other towns, out of town, Kansas City, and I think even as far as Denver. Those are volunteer drivers who get their gasoline paid for and their insurance is covered. So, that's a service that is so badly needed, because some of those people don't have a way to get there. They have installed over 300 fire alarms in Ford County. And there's an interesting story sidelined to that, too. There is a volunteer who rides his bicycle to Buckland and Ford and wherever they've called for fire alarms and delivers them. And then, the firefighters in that area install them. But there is a caveat. The people who ask for those have to supply a written plan for escape in a fire. So, that it isn't just you're getting a free fire alarm, you're doing something. And who knows how many lives that might have saved. I'm proud of that, and our colleagues should be too. The rodeo on campus, Jacob, was interesting. I enjoyed it. There were a lot of community people that came out to see that rodeo. And I think that was a first that hopefully will be repeated. I was impressed with how many community people there were. So, thank you, and thank you to Gabe for that. And I've also been impressed with the fact that we have a place for people to see the volleyball game. And if you haven't made a habit of volleyball games, they'll get you excited. So, I'm pleased that a lot of community people are coming to see the volleyball game. And the kids are really enjoying it, as you can tell, especially the people who've come in from the other schools. So, that's great, too. And the college foundation, Chris, is humming, getting ready for the auction. And it's been an uphill battle, because we haven't done it for two and a half years. So, we're making reconnective contacts with a lot of the people in the community. And that's going to be a need deal on the second day of November. So, dedicated board and Christina, thank you for that. And finally, a little bit more outlying point. The reauthorization of the Perkins Act that added over $1 billion for career and technical education to emphasize STEM courses that the workforce needs so badly. And Dean Ryan had that in, story in his report. So, we really are hoping we can take advantage of that. And then, just a while ago, I went over to see a choir. Stage full of high school choir people, and that was exciting. And Professor Kuplik was doing a great job with them. So, thank you. Did I not make two?
I think you made a. Maya?
I don't have a report. I don't.
All right, thanks, Karen. Of course, she took my time, so.
Thank you.
Well, she didn't take all mine. I have to say, first of all, that attending the football games has given me a few more gray hairs. And the last Saturday's game was so exciting. And it was fun to see our volleyball team there, supporting the football, the baseball, the basketball, golf. So, all of them down there. And at the very end, they were all hanging over the bleachers, excited about that ending. It was a phenomenal game for everybody to see. And I agree with Florence Jean, because what our students presented in the International Club the other night and brought in for this community was so moving and told a story with music and beautiful voices and orchestration behind it. It was not anything I had expected. And I was moved to just the center of my soul with what the message was about how people's lives are changed. So, if that ever gets to come back around again, more people need to see that tray.
Tray Venus.
It was, it was beautiful. And there's still an opportunity to buy bricks for out in front, for the foundation out in front. And I know that Christine's trying to get that information out. So, please, buy a brick and support our college and have your name down. And if you're a former Dodge City Community College graduate, put your name out there so everybody can say, "Oh, my gosh, I didn't know they went here." I made sure mine was out there, so everybody knew I did go here. Thank you.
Okay, on mine, so we, the board of trustees have completed their president's evaluation. And we had all but one trustee complete their evaluation. And in those evaluations, there were some questions asked of Dr. Nolte. So, I'll let him address that.
Just so happened I have those answered. These beautiful folders that Andrea gave me, so there you go. Somebody's phone's going off. By the way, just, and Jake, if I get this one wrong, let me know. The, I think at the first football game where we played Independence, I think we had a large crowd. And I know in the concession stand, we made like $2,000.
Sixteen hundred in concessions.
Sixteen hundred in concessions.
Over 2,000 at Gay, which was double, definitely, our biggest game from a year ago.
And then, and then for y'all to know, when we played the other school, a few weeks later, we won 93 to 0. The bookstore made $13,000 that day on that Tuesday. So, very, very, very good money's made, and so, all is well. Went out this morning to Cimarron, and there, at Cimarron, we have a meeting with Gray County. And they're excited about working with us. And they were very excited that we went ahead and we started a welding program out there. They have 10 students. And in our welding program, and they said, "Andy's doing a great job." And so, we're very excited about that. We'll continue. And they're giving us ideas of what they need. CDL is something that they're very interested in. Can't find enough bus drivers, y'all. Not enough bus drivers to, superintendent told, one of the superintendent from South Gray said he drove last, last year, 183 days driving the bus. So, that just kind of tells you that we need to help those, help those schools out and do some things with them. And they're just absolutely wonderful to help. And so, we'll continue doing those kind of things and helping. Just wanted to give you, you asked me at our last meeting, in the form of evaluations, you asked me to go ahead and answer those questions. And so, these are the questions answered. And I appreciate the opportunity to give you some answers. And interestingly enough, it was, it was hard to say last year or so. It was more like a three-year, three-year stint there. And so, I think that those questions were somewhat answered. And if you have any questions for me, that's, that's great. And thank you, Kathy, for asking about this book. I think it will help the trustees tremendously in answering some of those questions, especially about governance. And did everybody get one? And so, but I look, I look forward to continue working with you, and thank you, and thank you for doing my evaluation.
I thank you very much. I didn't have anything other than that, but just kudos to, you know, all the activities that you guys have brought up. So, we'll be done. All right, so we'll move on to the board action items. So, item A, certification. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm trying to rush through this. We have a guest here from EcoDevo.
He's got a football game.
Yeah. High school football game I'm missing right now, so I'm a little, little pregame here.
That's quite all right. Appreciate your time tonight. I just wanted to bring you up to date on a few of the things that we're working on in conjunction with the community college. But primarily, we are getting ready to ask you to join in a joint meeting with the City of Dodge City Commission, Ford County Commissioners, and USD 443 Board of Directors at a joint meeting on October 22nd. We don't have all the details lined out in it yet, but basically, what we're going to be doing there is reviewing where we're at on the rural housing incentive districts. And then, also, looking at some updates in the neighborhood revitalization program. Some positive things is a few of those RHIDs are getting close to paying off, so they'll be coming on to the tax rolls. But that program has been just absolutely tremendous in helping us to get some housing addressed in this community. And we get requests continually to come and talk about it across the state to help other communities get it implemented. Also, on the NRP, we, we have three current NRPs. And there is a clause in there that we did not allow them to transfer if ownership transfers. The state does not require us to do that. When we put those together, it was something that we felt would keep the paperwork more simplified. But we have come across that it's a little bit conflicting on some of the projects that we've been working on. And so, we're going to ask to have that removed to where it can transfer. And then, also, we're looking at adding an additional district. If you look at the south portion of Dodge City, we'd like to expand that down into South Dodge to try to encourage more cleanup and growth down there. And basically, the guidelines, whether it's commercial or residential, is they have to invest at least $15,000 and increase the appraised value by 5%. And so, this, the rebates are only on the incremental increase that they create if they do additions or things that change that valuation. So, if you guys have any questions on that, I'd be glad to answer it. But I thought I'd give you a heads up on that meeting coming up. Some exciting things that we're working on with your staff. We have the youth entrepreneurship competition. And Molly Wayne Scott is our housing coordinator. She does the RHID on NRPs, but she also works with the youth entrepreneurship competition and does our rule development. And so, I wanted to introduce Molly. But she's working with Andrea Lowell, and they're looking at hosting that here at the community college here this year on March 5th. I'm also working with Ryan Osmus, and then Maria Kane, the pathways lady from the high school. And we are working on doing Manufacturing Day. October 5th is celebrated as Manufacturing Day across the nation. And so, that particular day, we're going to have over 100 high school students touring five of our manufacturers here in town. And then, they'll be coming here to the Student Activity Center for lunch, and then touring the Technology Center here. And those will be freshmen through seniors. We also are going to be doing proclamations at the city and county on October 1st. And then, we'll also be working with about 50 of the community college tech students to give them the opportunity to tour a variety of manufacturers as well. And then, we'll also be doing press releases to get more information out for the community to be familiar with all the different products that are manufactured here in our community and the job opportunities that are available through our local manufacturers. We are also working on a career fair with Ryan and Michelle Haley with the nursing program. And that's tentatively scheduled for February 20th. So, that one's a little ways off, but a lot of plans need to be done between now and then. And then, probably one of the exciting things is we are going to start construction November 1st with the building trade students here at the community college on our third new house project. And this one is going to be a duplex with two three-bedroom units on a lot that the city owns on Avenue E and Briar. And then, also, just right in that same block, we've started construction on an abandoned house that was donated to us by Pride Ag Resources. It was up in, in Jetmore by their elevator up there, and they needed it removed. And so, the foundation is done, and that will be coming into our community, too, to add additional housing. So, I'll try to keep you guys quick, too, but I'd be happy to answer any questions on anything that you have we could use assistance with.
What was the date on that hearing for the NRPs?
That will be October 22nd. And I believe it's going to be 5:30 at the Learning Center.
And that's when we're taking the group picture?
No, that's when we will have the proposed changes and the vote on those changes for the Neighborhood Revitalization Program and an update on the rural housing incentive districts. So, another project that I really appreciate Dr. Nolte's support on, that we've been working on, is the University Center project. We have got tremendous momentum going forward with Seward County Community College, Garden City Community College supporting it as well as the universities and the regents. But more critically, I think what we're looking at doing is really trying to build coalitions across southwest Kansas to get the mindset changed, so that there are higher education opportunities here. Encourage our kids when they're in middle school and high school to get through the community college and get that pathway established to higher education opportunities, that they can still live and work here in Dodge City. And not only those younger students, but, you know, the middle-aged working person that life has happened. And they really would have that opportunity to better themselves and our community if they had the opportunity to get higher education. And so, we are working with the Kansas Health Foundation, the Kansas Health Institute, Network Kansas, and CREA, which is the Western Kansas Rural Economic Development Alliance, to really start building that awareness and that coalition to hopefully change that mindset, to partner with our education facilities and our businesses and our citizens to have that ultimate goal, that they can each be a lot better. And we can get the universities more secure and being able to know that they'll get the students to fill those classes if they bring those courses here. So, anyways, any questions? All right, I appreciate your time and look forward to working you guys continually on these things. Thank you.
Thanks, Joanne. Now, we'll move on to board action items. First up is the certification of Fidelity State Bank and Trust. So, Sandy?
Yeah, these are basically just some housekeeping banking duties that we need to take care of due to the personnel changes. The first one, the certification of Fidelity, I believe the last board meeting, you guys voted Dr. Nolte in his treasure. So, this just places him in his treasure and having the signatory authorization on all of our bank accounts. So, that's what the first one is. Do you want to combine them, or do you want to go one by one?
Let's go ahead and do them one by one.
Okay.
Do you have a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right.
Okay, the second one is just designating, once again, Dr. Nolte on our official bank, the Fidelity's, where we have our general account, our medical account, and our Flex account. That's just adding him to the, having the authorization on that.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
The second?
I'll second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Okay, the third and last is just designating all the other banks that we actually possibly would do business with. Sunflower has our fee fund account. Western State, we do CDs with. So, just giving us the authority to deposit funds there if we wanted to have CDs, basically, or open it up in an account.
Okay, motion?
I'll move.
Second? Chairman? Okay, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
When I grow up, I want to save lives like a superhero and show up when people needed me.
When I grow up, I want to be a police officer and I want to protect people too.
No matter what it is you want to achieve in the future, your journey starts here.
When I grow up, when I grow up, when I grow up, I don't know what I want to do when I grow up, but I know I want to go to college.
Dodge City Community College, adventure awaits.
Okay, next up is the Sunfire Community Garden Orchard proposal.
Daniel Tagg and the guy should have a proposal and find out about where it's supposed to go. Supposed to go, move it to the south of the garden and it won't be no expense to the college. The city's going to pay for the trees and the city's going to pay for the installing of the water, the drip system. And also, we get free water from the city, so there won't be no cost to the college board. And we'd like to say there's a view of those on front of it, so that's what we're asking for.
I have a question. When the trees become mature, then the community can go out and pick their fruit from it?
No. I mean, we give fruit away, but it's, that's a misconception for a lot of people that those gardens, I guess, are there, they're communities, they're not, they're rented. And but the most of, or a lot of the, I'd say probably 70, 80% of the food is given away to people. But we don't have it set up so that, because the people who rent the plots do all the work. And the same way with the orchard, the plan would be is to give the fruit away, not to sell it.
Terry, I have a problem with that because we're a community college and it says community garden, but then you have signs out there posted, no trespassing. And then, they have to buy plots on our community college land. I don't think that that's what we're in the business to do out here.
Well, the land is not, you know, I say we're allowed to use it because it's not being used for anything else. I can't think of anything better to use land for than to grow vegetables on, rather than it lay there. But the city also, we have a plot over by Division Street. If it weren't for the people who wanted to spend the money to grow the vegetables to give them away, or of course, they use some of them themselves, then you wouldn't have it.
Does it have a sign there too? No trespassing?
Well, and the reason for that, Kathy, is that the people steal the vegetables or wreck things, so that's...
But if the people need them?
It's a lot of work to grow a garden. It shouldn't, you shouldn't be able to just go in somebody's garden and pick what you want.
Yeah. I just think as a college, I have...
If it's at somebody's garden, why isn't it not in their yard? Why is it here? Then, you're precluding people that own the college from gaining access to it even though it's Ford County People's College?
You can rent the spot, you can rent a spot up there.
Who gets the rent?
The city, I guess, I don't know.
Well, no, the, it's a not-for-profit corporation.
So, a corporation gets the rent?
Yeah, I mean, what they do then is pay for the removal of debris and pay for any repairs. I mean, it's not a profit situation.
Well, I was going to say, removal of debris, there's all kinds of debris up there. I've been up there two or three times this month and there has been no removal of any debris anywhere.
Yeah, you just got cited from the city for that.
Well, if, you know, if it displeases you that the, some people are, you know, trying their hardest to help people with, give them vegetables and growing things, then I'm sorry that it does. I think it's a good project and I think it's a good use of land that's not being used for anything else. The college can have it back. For example, we invested over $7,000 in the orchard, which is now gone and the city must think it's important because they're willing to replace it. I imagine they would give us some land. But over $10,000 has been invested in that property and irrigation. So, if you think that someone's getting an advantage by helping other people, then I feel sorry for them.
I think it's the definition of community to, for a community, to have a place where people can have a piece of ground to grow a garden.
But you don't charge them for it.
Why is it such a big deal? We're going to provide some land and the city's going to pay for the water and, you know?
I personally think it's a great idea.
I think it's a great idea.
You got 20 acres out here, I could go plow out and plant the wheat and I got time to do it this fall. Great idea.
This arrangement, like the community garden here in Dodge City, that arrangement, you know, they didn't invent the wheel. The community garden people didn't invent the wheel. This is done in many communities on public land, from cities where people, where people live in apartments and they're able to have some garden space and to other places their property is in a place where they can have a garden, so they do this. I think it's been going on for a long time. I think it's good public relations. I know a lot of the food comes down to Friendship Feast, the food program here in Dodge City. I think it's of great benefit to this community personally. And I support it.
What's the cost of a plot?
Oh, we've got different sizes up there. The 12 by 20 plots rent for $10 for the season. The 15 by 20 plots rent for $15. The 20 by 20s rent for $20. 20 by 40s rent for $25. I have plots up there. I have 12 plots up there. I have seven, eight plots down in the Division Street Garden. And also, help that lady out of Ford Dodge on the plot. I have a plot behind my house over in Cimarron. But I give away produce. I've gave away probably four or $500 worth of produce this year out of my plots. I've given to Friendship Feast. I've given to Man of House in the past years. I've given to Mexican-American Ministries. I've given to people that are less fortunate than me. I mean, that community garden is a nonprofit organization. One down in Division Street's been down there 13 years. One up here in the college has been up here 10 years. There's gardeners, people that are in there that live in apartments that don't have a place and they want a garden, so they come up here and garden.
I want to ask a question. I'm looking at the lease, which is dated '09. And SCG covenants agrees, the SCG agrees to, number C, build and maintain a good quality chain link fence surrounding the garden.
Just begin to hand the money to put it around there. Because fencing is high-dollar stuff. And we do have a chain link fence around the one down Division, but it was donated 13 years ago.
Well, it is in...
Yeah.
And number D, provide a good quality wood shed to be located in the garden area for storage of tools, hoses and other equipment.
Sheds up there in the middle of the garden.
In the garden?
Yeah, it's up there in the middle of it. It was built by one of the gardeners.
I read that.
He built it and he didn't charge us for any of the material. He built it and donated it.
Okay, I wanted to clarify that.
I estimated last year that over 4,000 pounds of vegetables were given to Friendship Feast and others.
Where did that estimate come from?
From the gardeners.
The what?
From the gardeners.
So, you guys weigh your produce as it comes out?
Yeah.
Well, I pretty much know what a watermelon weighs.
So, it's a wild ass guess?
Yes, Gary. Nobody did an accounting on it.
All right, then catch the chase.
Again, I apologize that the gardeners have done a good thing. No good deed goes unpunished apparently.
Oh, is that what that is?
Well...
But to me, you're in violation of your own grievance upon the covenants.
Well, kick us off. You shouldn't do that. You can end the lease anytime you want to.
Okay.
How much was the fine?
For what?
The city. Kathy just told me the city fined us. How much was the fine?
They said they cited you. I think they have a...
They fined anybody for crying out loud. Mr. Tagg here has had, he's the one that usually keeps the garden in tip-top shape. He's been very ill the last year, so we did not get, some gardeners have failed to do what they said they would do. It's a very, very small group and they're trying the best they can to do something good. So, we've talked to the city about doing, making a better effort. That's one thing the orchard would do is have a barrier there. I don't particularly like the way the garden looks sometimes, but the fruit trees would help that, I think.
I remember when he says I was ill. I spent seven days in ICU back in February with pneumonia, killer pneumonia and septic infection. They had to bring me back to life February 21st. I'm a walking miracle. And I spent three days, seven days in ICU here at Dodge City Hospital. Three days in a regular room. I lost between 30 and 35 pounds. I lost a bunch most of the time. And three weeks ago Tuesday, I went to the emergency room and they found pneumonia in the lower bottom lobe of my left lung, my left lobe of my left lung. And since then, I have mowed off 10 plots up at the college community garden and I mowed six aisles and I mowed in front of the shed and that's since...
But you shouldn't have to do that by yourself if you have other gardeners.
But I'm the president of the community garden and I cut down some seven-foot, eight-foot weeds down against the fence down at the Division Street Garden this week. And like I say, hard to keep me down, but I, I've got 12 plots in this one up here, eight plots in the Division Street Garden. And I take on open plots and if somebody abandons a plot, I take it over and I give away the produce. Like I say, I've given away probably up close to $500 worth of produce just this year alone. And some of the gardeners have given me stuff and I pass it on to other people. I passed it on to quite a few elderly people that I'll pass it on to and everything. I haven't taken anything to Friendship Feast this year, but one of the gardeners, Maul Hill up here, he has, he takes quite a bit of stuff to Friendship Feast. He's done Friendship Feast quite a bit. He's 75 years old. He's got one plot up here, he's got one plot down in Division. And he helped me out of the night down in Division Street Garden. He's helped me up here at the college garden. There's been several guys helping me out in the plots in the past years. Gary's helped me out too. But like I say, I'm a walking miracle. Kind of hard to cut me down.
I'm not trying to, like Terry's, so trying to do that. I'm against doing good things for the community and feeding people. But I do know that there's a lot of elderly people that go to the different plots and they've been very offended by seeing those no trespassing signs.
One of the reasons why we put the no trespassing signs up, one of the main reasons was there was a guy stalking, he just got out of prison, was stalking one of our gardeners. She's 79 years old right now. But two years ago, he was stalking her down at the Division Street Garden to be on the legal side about it in case we had somebody stealing from us or somebody stalking one of the older gardeners or any gardener that we had something, a leg stand on. It's the reason we put the no trespassing signs up. That's one of the main reasons we put them up. We got one gardener up here at the college garden that's 85 years old. She's got four 12 by 20 plots up here. She's got the 36 by 36 plot behind her house, but she's 85 years old. She's going to be 86 in November. She's one of our best gardeners.
I think gardening is hard work and I think you ought to be able to enjoy the fruits of your labor. And I don't think anybody else ought to be able to come on there. And I think the no trespassing signs ought to be made larger and more bold so that people don't think they have a right to your work, to your labor and your expense you put into seed and taking care of things.
Well, see, I keep an eye on both of the gardens, both the gardens.
Your backyard of your apartment.
And people, I've caught people on there that came in there and they don't have a plot in there. They've come in and they're wanting to pick stuff. I said, if you don't have, I said, you got a plot in there? And they say, no. I said, this belongs to the people that works. It's a lot of hard work.
It is.
We've seen, we've had gardeners go gun a hole for six weeks and then give up.
Kathy, if you know anybody that wants that, they have to do his ass.
But they don't know who to ask, Terry.
They're not reading the Globe now because we put an article in every year at the spring.
There's somebody up there a lot of times.
But a lot of places will set baskets out and...
We don't do that, you know? If you'd like to rent a plot and put a basket out, that would be fine. That's not the way it's always set up.
Let me ask another question. You don't have to do all the work, you said. Why hasn't there been agreement with those people if they keep that need?
Now, we've talked to them. We want to enforce it a little bit more next year. And I've talked to the gardeners about the ones, plots that have grown up with weeds and stuff and some of them work, some of them work two jobs to make a living.
That's not the point.
No, I know that's not the point, but I've mowed down some weeds that are mine, but I've been trying to stay on top of it even with my health.
Well, I bet everybody can rent their own plot, go up there and plant weed, hoe, do the stuff they need to do and then put a sign out there that says everything inside this fence is free, you know? Kathy can get her own plot and say, all this stuff's free. That's all she has to do. You know, if she wants to work hard and sweat out 100 degrees and plant a garden, take care of a garden and give it away, that's fine. But I don't think everybody wants to do that. And I don't think everybody should be forced to do it.
But it's on community college ground and people, Kathy, many places have it on.
Many gardens are on public, this is a system that has worked in many, many communities for many, many years. And it's a way often for fresh vegetables to get into the diet of people who don't have the money to buy them. It's a way for people who want to garden who have that.
But people don't realize this is out here and when you drive by it, it doesn't look like a garden.
Then we need to work on that and the garden people do that. I just think that, I think should we decide not to support the community garden, I think that we are doing something that will bring so much bad publicity to this community that we'll have this room full of protesters. And finally, the college is beginning to come out of a time of turmoil. And I think that I don't want to pick this tiny little scab and have this community in an uproar again. I want to work on our reputation as a fine place and I don't think that opposing the community garden people is the time to do it.
And I don't oppose you guys. I just oppose the charging of fees for the ground.
Would you donate?
What ground? I don't own this ground.
No, money. I mean, it takes money to run the garden.
Well, the water's free and the land's free.
Yeah, well, the trash removal isn't free and the ground up that we buy to take care of.
But that's individual...
That's the gardener's...
No, well, first of all...
If they buy the seed, they ought to be able to pick the fruit.
Well, first of all, the, not all the lots are rented.
Not all the rocks are rented.
So, in order to keep buying weed out and things of this nature, we have to take care of that and we try to. This year, because of Daniel's illness, some of the plots didn't get mowed like we liked them. It's the first time we've ever had a complaint. But it wasn't, it's not something we plan on doing and I hope it doesn't happen in the future. We might, that's one thing we've always worried about is keeping it nice looking.
You know, I think what we have here, you know, mine, you brought it up, but we're getting kind of two sides and two complaints here. And, you know, one is how can we put out, give ground for the benefit of a select few when it's public property? And that's the complaint we're hearing, is how can we sit there and let these people have this ground for free and it's public ground and restrict my access to it when it's public ground? Then I hear what you guys are saying about, you know, what it's good for the community and the production of vegetables and all that, so I see both sides and says, how do we reconcile that? Some people are offended at the fact that the select few get access to public property.
Well, that's not right.
And what's our role here?
Yeah, that's not a select...
That's not right. There's ground up there available. If people, if people aren't happy about not getting a piece of ground, there's plots up there available. There's plots down on Division available.
So, we're going to sit there and let everybody, we want to come on the college and claim a piece of college property for their own gain, good? Is that what we're going to do?
The board entered into a lease with us, so we didn't go up there and stake a homestead. We asked permission and they thought, they thought it was a good idea. City thinks it's such a good idea that they decided to give us water. They decided to move the trees or pay for new ones that were destroyed because of the sale. They decided to put in a drip irrigation at a cost, all of that will cost the city around $7,000.
This isn't the city. This is the community college. This is our property.
Well, I know that. They have to be...
This is our property. We have to decide what happens to our property. That makes the most sense for Ford County.
Move on to something else.
Well, can we talk about the trees?
Just the definition of community means that we're going to cooperate with the people we live around, so.
I agree, agree.
We need to talk about the trees because that's the upcoming discussion.
And I think, and fortunately, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think in the effort of, and sir, I commend you for your work despite your illness this year and your diligence in trying to get things corrected and we do really appreciate that. I, the lease unfortunately is outdated and it's just... The lease unfortunately is outdated and it's just on a, you know, inferred contractual basis now because the terms have expired on it years ago. And I think this is a good opportunity to maybe restructure that lease and get it updated to make some of the corrections, amendments and otherwise, and some of the points that Florrie Jean raised or questions that she had. And then maybe come back to us. Excuse me, and the reason I kind of bring that up too is I have concern because I know how contentious this tree issue became not that long ago with the sale of the ground up here in the corner. And looking at the map and where the location of the garden already is and the proposal of where the trees will go, knowing that there's also been some discussion and ongoing discussion about possibly extending the road from off the campus behind the building that crossed over to the high school. And it's going to end up eating into this and there will be easements and all these things. And we're going to end up cutting trees down and taking garden out and stuff again. And so in an effort to try to make that next time around, because I'm probably not going to be here, probably none of us will be here at the time, so that it doesn't become the contentious thing that it did this time, so that we don't have these community issues that you're bringing up, Maya, maybe if you guys can kind of restructure that lease with some understandings, and I'm sure Glenn would be glad to help with that, that to give the college and the community garden their opportunities to both do what we need to do, make it equitable and fair, and so that if some opportunities arise that we need that ground back at some point, that it doesn't become a sticking point or an issue that divides a bunch of people again because that was a sad thing. So that's my suggestion. I don't disagree with anything being said tonight. It's a community. We need to try to come work together as a community, so let's see if we can do that. Get a new lease put together anyways because like I said, this one's outdated four years now, so it's time to update it anyways.
I didn't know there was any expiration on it. I thought there was.
You know, there is.
Yeah, there's an automatic renewal for a second three-year term and then after that, under statute, it just automatically. No, and it's not a critique, Mr. Tate. Don't take it the wrong way. I just, it's just a good opportunity. The topic came up, let's talk about it and fix it, so.
But I do want to make a point about the trees. I like trees, but we are also obligated under this proposal to mow and take care of that new venture, which is for us an expense in equipment and labor. So it's not just free to the college either. Needs to be remembered. We would have that investment in the new venture.
Okay, Jeremy's point is the lease technically expired in '15, but according to statute, since nothing verbal expressions one way or another, it's allowed to continue on a yearly basis since 2015. And so as of March 1 this year, it will be, there will be no lease. So Jeremy's point is, you know, we had that issue in the past where the college needed to use its land and there was a sticking point there. So if we decide to continue on with such a lease, then I would suggest like Jeremy does as well, is this lease be updated and make sure that the college has its ability to do what it needs to do for the good of the school.
And I guess the thing that I would ask is if you can take it back and then maybe rework. I'm no gardener and I'm sure no orchard arborist. Maybe restructure where those trees are going to go with the understanding, and I'm sure Carla, some, one of these nice folks can provide the, I know there's a map. I've seen the picture of the proposed intersection that would come across. If they could provide that, and that way you guys can kind of restructure where those would go so it doesn't involve ruining and tearing down a bunch more trees again. Takes a long time to get fruit on those things, so I'd hate to start over.
Yeah, and we just get fruit on them over there.
So that's my two cents or my input on it.
I have another question about fruit trees which have to be sprayed for invaders, not people, bugs.
Can't spray the people.
So you're saying there's no money for a chain link fence is money to buy, right, for the trees?
Yes, we do that. A chain link fence, that was probably a bad idea, but it would cost about $10,000.
I know, it seems to me.
So I mean, and there's really no sense in doing that.
I would agree with that because that kind of goes down to that permanent structure thing. If you have permanent structures and if we have to, for need of that property, that's just going to be more, more pain.
Yeah. I mean, we take, you know, we know, Gary, that we take that risk. We took the risk over there. The city didn't have to do any, but they did.
Goodwill.
Gracious to. Gracious to.
Terry, can you take that as an amendment to your, because this is your resolution, sir. Can you bring that back to us at a later date? Can we table this for now or?
Yeah.
Fair enough.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I moved to table Terry's resolution until Mr. Tate and Terry can come back.
Second.
So what about the lease?
Well, that's, that's what we'll have to look at is lease.
I have one more comment on that.
Just, Kathy, so there was a motion and then a second and then right pushing. You made a second.
Yeah.
Terry, pardon me, Terry made a second. Okay, discussion, Kathy.
I just, I just wanted to where people, whether it's in the advertising or putting it in the paper weekly, that this is available, you know, or somehow the word is not out there. People don't know and they are put off by the trespassing signs. So some way we've got to make it to where it's welcoming and people know that that's available and if the garden's too large to control the one man, then maybe when you guys are relooking at it, maybe it needs to be to where it's.
Ask RSVP for help.
Kathy, unfortunately, the gardeners are all getting, you know, older. What we want to do is to encourage, have always wanted to do is encourage church groups or school groups and get young children involved in it because most of them don't know how to grow a tomato.
A lot of them do that at school because it costs busing to take them out these months. Thank you.
All right. We still have a motion and a second on the floor, so any further discussion? None's, all is in favor of tabling this item until we have a chance to go through that lease as presented in the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Go, same side.
When I grow up, I want to save lives like a superhero and show up when people needed me.
When I grow up, I want to be a police officer and I want to protect people too.
No matter what it is you want to achieve in the future, your journey starts here.
When I grow up, when I grow up, when I grow up. I don't know what I want to do when I grow up, but I know I want to go to college.
Dodge City Community College, adventure awaits.
All right, we'll move on to the Adidas team agreement. So Jacob.
Thank you. Wanted to come and present tonight for a couple of reasons with this. In the spring, I was approached by Kansas MTXE, which is a team dealer for Adidas, about creating an all-school deal for our athletic program through Adidas, which would give us some branding, branding presence with Adidas. After being a little, some questioning, they actually went back and had an Adidas corporate person actually come out here to Dodge City and meet with me because I did have questions. And then he sent the agreement that you guys have in your packet for me to look over. I did give this to Council Curbs to look over and he, you could see in your packet the letter that he did approve this agreement, what this agreement would do. The cost wise would be very similar in anything cost that we do. The, we're spending money. One of the things that, the concerns that people have had is the lack of being a local vendor. But we're not really buying much local right now anyway because we do not have a major sporting goods vendor in Dodge City right now. The locker room sells some t-shirt, short stuff, but we do not have anybody that is a team vendor for any of your major athletic suppliers, Nike, Adidas, Under Armour, you go down the list. There's not a team vendor here in Dodge City. So that was one of the concerns that really doesn't make a difference with this. And you can look through the agreement and see the terms that were presented to us. It gives us some opportunities for all of our campus community in addition to, in addition to what we would buy through the athletic department. We also give that opportunity to the bookstore. It would also give us the opportunity to extend discounts to our whole campus community at certain times of the year. Wouldn't be the full time, but at certain times of the year. And the thing, the thing that it will do, and this is why I want to be very upfront with this, the thing that it would do is it would put us somewhat at odds with our policies and the fact that it would make Kansas MTXE as the representative of Adidas a sole provider for our Adidas, our Adidas wear. But the pricing is very upfront. We're not going to get that pricing anywhere else from any, from any other company with the additional benefits. We could probably get the exact same pricing, but nothing better. But we would not get the, we would not get the additional benefits through the branding and some of the free promotional things that they would give to us. So I would respectfully ask that you guys would approve, but I would welcome questions prior to that.
Yeah, Jacob?
Yes.
So when it says a 40% discount and a 35% discount, how does that really work? A discount to what?
The, if you look at an Adidas catalog, which we've got a ton of them out there, any Adidas team catalog, and it have to be through their team sales stuff, they have a retail price listed in that. So we would automatically, on any footwear, we would automatically get 35% off of that retail price. And any clothing, any cloth, we would automatically get 40% off of that price as well as uniforms. And that's probably the big difference in this agreement with, as to others that I've been proposed before is in the past, I've had these agreements presented to me, but they did not include uniforms. And that's probably the biggest difference in this one. And it's the reason that I was impressed with it. One of the things that, I had this discussion back this summer with Vice President Herman when she was still here and she made the comment, you might want to look at Nike, Adidas, what they would do. And I've talked to different reps and at this point, none of them are willing to put forth this type of agreement for a school of our size.
Okay, so right now, policy states that we have to get three bids?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, and that's, because you can't really go uniforms by the route we were going before, correct? Where you could get bids on that, could you?
Yeah, we, we could get bids and we did get bids. But in the end, I mean, this is about, you really don't see much pricing better than what we're getting here and we wouldn't get any of the extra benefits of it. We would just get that pricing and that's about where we'd end it.
Okay, that's what I was getting at. What kind of a discount would we get when we put it out to the bid?
And you see in the agreement with the promotional, you see the product allotment, the percentage back that we would get after buying. And that's where the real benefit comes. Under 3A.
3A, yeah, but we would have to basically revise our policies.
Right. And that's why I say it would go against, against that policy. Other questions?
Jacob, as far as uniforms go, because I know we had just, you know what question I'm going to ask you about Adidas.
I know exactly. You're asking if we're going to, Adidas has given, has agreed to give us a grace period for rotating out uniforms because we do have other uniforms that are other brands.
I know we just got our football uniforms.
But they are Adidas.
Okay, that's, I can remember which brand.
Yes, the football uniforms are Adidas, but they have given us a grace period with our normal rotation to get out of those uniforms.
Thank you, sir.
That's a very good question. I meant to bring that up.
Do you have any time?
Probably some, not, not a ton, but it does save me some time. I think one of the things that it would do is give us a branding presence with, with a national company. And they, they've been very supportive, not only from Kansas MTXE, but from Adidas corporate. Scott Snyder is the rep and he's, you see his name on that agreement. He's been out here twice and he's also met with me a couple of other times. So they're very interested in branding Dodge City on board.
If we approve this, we're going to be in violation of our own policies?
Yeah.
We'd have to change it. We'd have to make an exception.
We have to make an exception policy, which is okay.
Right.
I have a question about being very sure that we are applying promotion. I don't want us to have to pay for something and then not be able to use it the next year. And this says if you have material left over that you can't use.
That is actually, what that refers to is the rebate money that we would get. And if, if we did not use any of that rebate money, which I assure you with my coaches will not be a problem, if we did not use that by the end of the year, we would lose the ability to use that money by June 30th.
Okay.
It's, well, it's, it's not money. It's, it's credit for goods.
Credit for goods.
Yes.
So we're really not paying any money on that?
No.
And the only, so the only other way to go with the policy is you'd have to go get, you'd have to request bids from Nike and Under Armour and whoever else rebooking or else wanted to submit.
We could, we could technically probably get bids from other, other sources, but we would not get the rebate piece unless we go through that specified vendor from, that Adidas sets us up with, which would be Kansas MTXE.
Have you talked to your coaches about the Adidas gear?
Yes, we have. Yes, we have. And we had, we had some hesitation in some places, but for the most part, they said, you know, if this helps us as a department as a whole, we were very interested in doing this.
So good quality, safe product.
Yes.
It seems to me we're getting the cart in front of the horse. If we're going to do this, I think, I don't think we can approve this tonight. I think we have to discuss policy and change policy. You can't approve this and then change the policy.
No, we do an exception to policy.
And that's the reason I brought it to the board because I knew it was an exception to the policy.
Right. Okay. Any other questions for Jacob? Council Curbs, would you have like to chime in on that action?
Well, it is an exception to the policy. We don't, normally our exceptions to the policy aren't so transparent. They happen.
Today, we're transparent.
Today, we're being transparent. That's what puts us in this.
That's why, that's why I asked Jacob to come. Thank you, Jay.
And we've, you know, we've talked about making some modifications to the policy and they really, there's, there are multiple changes that need to be made to the policy and we just haven't done it. You know, I think if the board is openly recognizing we have this policy, that we are going contrary or accepting from the policy, I don't think it would be challenged. The better practice, of course, would be to change the policy.
Would we need to state in this action that we are?
I'm sorry.
Would we need to state that the policy is under?
Construct review.
Construction, yeah. Would we need to say that?
What is the timeline on this agreement?
It's, it's a three-year agreement.
No, no, no. When do we have to do it? When do we have to do it?
They invited to get it done pretty quickly because we're already into this purchasing cycle.
Well.
And these kind of, these kind of policies will hit, for example, you're going to probably eventually have your, and I don't know when that policy, when that's up, but your Coke or Pepsi, you know, those kind of, those kind of things. But our goal is to be very transparent, say, this is what we're going, this is what we're thinking about doing. If you like it, fine. If you vote on it and say yes, that's good. I think more of the board knowing these kind of things and voting on these things is very, very important. Whether you like it or not, I mean, companies are coming to, if you try to buy Nike, Nike's not going to give you anything, you know. If you've ever, you know, the digs or whatever. Well, they do now, but, you know, but these are, these are opportunities for us to save some money. And this is, this has brought up the whole idea of reviewing that policy. And so that needs to happen.
Do we still have an agreement like with Pepsi?
Do we hear at the college? Do we hear at the college?
Yes, certainly, yes. It's kind of falls...
The foreign rights is due for expiration and will be rebid?
But those, those have been bid. Those, those have been bid.
Oh, okay. I thought, anyway, it kind of falls in the same line.
But we fall, we, we have kind of a difficult situation because like when we go to Memorial Stadium and play football, we have to honor the foreign rights that the 443 has entered into because it's their facility. And so...
I would prefer to make an exception because I don't think you can, well, I'm in favor of this, and I would like to make an exception because I don't believe you can form a policy that covers every possibility in the world.
Actually, actually, we kind of looked at it, and all we need to do is that we could buy board action, accept.
Exactly. That would be my preference. Because, because the idea of getting bids on everything is a good policy.
Because of particular circumstances, the board could waive the policy or accept it.
That would be, that would be my preference as a member of the board.
Got a motion?
Yes, I, I make the motion that we make an exception in this specific case.
Okay.
I'll second your motion.
Second. Discussion?
I think we need to do it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Okay. All right, moving on to the United Communications Telephone Upgrade. If anybody's tried to call the college here, they have phone issues. Huh? You hung, you hung up on them.
Carl's life is, Carl's life is terrible.
My phone is blinking with the message.
Yeah, had this, I don't know for sure how long this has been going on even, because, you know, we had, United come out, and we had them checking the system because we were having some trouble. And it seemed like every time we touched it, it got worse.
She would bid them out too?
To who? But we, and I misspoke on here because when our phone goes to voicemail on that third or fourth ring, it doesn't actually hang up on the caller. You suddenly get just a loud, constant busy signal.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what you got. And some people on campus, I know Ramona's one of them, they have, they don't know how many voicemail messages, and they can't access them either. So we, we figured, we were told that we needed this E2T software kit to fix this glitch between the phone system and the voicemail system. And then come to find out that it was time to renew our five-year software assurance agreement with Mitel. And United can't get, and we can't get our, our support on this without that agreement, which is something that we have had on a regular basis in the past. If you, if you would like the breakdown on it, we're looking at $9,500 for five years of software support. We're looking at $2,100 and some dollars for the expansion kit, and then we're looking at about $720 for the label to replace the card, add the, add the upgrade to the software and various other things that, that will go along with this upgrade that United will enforce. They are pretty much our loan provider for this kind of thing. We've worked with them for years on this telephone system. The telephone system is still a viable, workable system. We just need this so that we can keep it that way. The, some people think that, that we, that we got this system about two or three years after Bell and then into telephone, but we haven't really had it that long. Anyway, so, yeah, so my, my request is for the $12,353.74 so that we can get our voicemail problem fixed, and that we will have the technical support that we will need as time goes on with occasional things that go wrong with the phone system.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Why has it taken so long for them to realize we have a problem? Doesn't there something they could have done, that much?
Well, I don't know what they could have done. I mean, it's, it's just that when we started getting this rain, I don't know if that had anything to do with it. I've been told that sometimes that we'd have areas where the rain, when it rains a lot, that we'll get water in one of our, one of our conduits or something, and I'm not sure about that yet. But sometimes it'll take us a week or so just to get them out here because they're, you know, they have other customers as well. Then when they come out and they troubleshoot it, and they was out here for an entire day before they finally figured out what piece of equipment was defective. And then it was several more days when they went in to order this piece of equipment that they, they contacted them for customer service or software support and found out that we had not been notified of our expiration on that. So then we had to put this together and, and come and ask for the expenditure. So it's just one of those things where everything took a few extra days.
Well, I read that as an answer. And maybe I'm wrong because I don't understand why the increases. But we put up with this, do you?
I don't, I don't know that we've had this problem for that long.
We've had some problems.
Oh, we have different problems off and off, yeah.
Have we had good service on the other problems?
Yes, for the most part. I mean, there have been other times when we've had not problems, just changes that we needed to be, have them make. And sometimes it would take, you know, a couple of weeks or so to get them out here.
But that's part of our service.
It is part of the service, but...
Was there any other game in town?
There is no other game in town, and the only way we could get away with it, from this, the only way we can get away from this is to buy a completely new phone system, you know, put out bids, get a new phone system, and find another provider that can service...
And learn how to use it.
And learn how to use, there's that too.
Is there any chance that all the construction loan for teams can interfere with their cable? Maybe, is that part of it?
I don't think so. I think, because this particular problem on this is right here in our admin building. So it's not anything to do with the actual cabling.
Well, I make a motion to accept the bid, or the policy, or with the, again, exception of our policy, because again, we can't really bid this one because there's no alternatives right now. So we need to make another exception, I feel, in this same instance as the one we just discussed.
I second your motion.
Thanks.
Okay. So there is a motion to second. Any further discussion? CNN, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
And our symphony?
Okay. We'll move on to new business. I moved an item in there concerning governance. And there's been an issue brought up here of late concerning Policy 808, the confidentiality portion of Policy 808. Oh, sorry. No, it's, I've got too much stuff. You do? So on the back page, if you read the confidentiality portion of that, there's been an issue that might have comprised some confidentiality. And I'll ask Glenn, Attorney Curbs, if you've heard any response back from that?
No, I, and I talked to trustee Rankin-Ward this afternoon, and I still don't, we still don't have any information about the breach of confidentiality that you referenced.
Okay. All right. So I think, you know, one, we get to review the policies, especially this portion for, you know, for what the intent of them is about. So I think that dealing with this, I think, you know, we've formed some subcommittees in the past, and I believe that this board needs to form another one called Governance to deal with issues like this and training, work training, and, and things of that nature. So I'd like to form a Governance Committee. This will be different, so this will be more of action. The other committees are more of kind of representing the board on these committees at the college for knowledge and be able to report that back to the full board. This one will be comprised of three people. I'd like to ask Maya, Kathy, and Jeremy if they would serve on this committee. And Kathy's done some great work on Governance. She brought this book to us. And so I just think for us to be a good performing board, I think this will help us get there. So if you three will help serve this function, I truly appreciate it.
Good, Mr. Chairman. Then will we have an opportunity to go over some of the findings and discuss them?
The Governance Committee?
Yes.
Yes.
I believe that needs to be done.
And then, you know, so we need to be conscious of form, and three does not constitute form. But if a third member does join that, then that makes four, that makes it a form. So it's, it's just an, we have a lot of guidelines on how to form a Governance Committee, so we'll be, be good at that. And so I think this will help, help the board function.
And the confidentiality will be a priority for this?
I, I didn't hear you.
Confidentiality issue will be a priority?
I think all of our policies are going to be a priority. And board conduct will be a, a, a priority.
Ethics.
Ethics, absolutely. That's basically what it is, and training, and you're seeing what we need as, as a board to be better and, and all that, yes.
We need that.
When I was in Washington DC at the AICAC training, Mr. Chairman, we spent a long day on this issue.
And I don't doubt that.
Yes, and so it's important. Very important.
Every, every board I sit on right now pretty much has a Governance Committee. And so they, it's, in the banking world, it's probably our top committee, so. All right. That's all I had, had for new, new business. So we'll move on to executive session number one.
Do we need to approve the consent agenda?
Oh, I...
Really?
Okay. Okay, you're right. We need to approve the consent agenda. So I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as, as...
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you for keeping on point there, Jim.
Mr. Chairman, as related issue to this online data service, next meeting, I would like to have a report on our online offerings, number, and where we are online.
Okay. Scott?
So, Counsel Curbs, will you?
Did you approve it?
We did, did I, I did, yes, I did. Go through the votes.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board recess into executive session to discuss negotiations with the Professional Relations Committee of the Dodge City Community College Faculty Association for the 2018-2019 School Year Contract Pursuit to the Employer-Epoy Negotiations Except to the Kansas Open Records Act, ASA 754319B3. The open meeting to resume at this location at 7:32 PM. In addition to the trustees, the president, and the college attorney should be included in the executive session.
All right. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are now in executive session. All right, we are now back in session, and no action was taken. So we'll move on to executive session number two.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board recess into executive session to discuss President Noldy's evaluation pursuant to the Personnel Matters of Non-Elected Personnel Except to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA 754319B1. The open meeting to resume in this location at 7:50 PM. In addition to the trustees, the president, and the college attorney should be included in the executive session.
All right. Is there a motion?
I move.
Second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are now in executive session. Back in session, and there was no action taken. And now we will ask Attorney Curbs to take us into executive session number three.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board recess into executive session to discuss the proposed hire for Vice President for Administration and Financial CFO pursuant to Personnel Matters of Non-Elected Personnel Except to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA 754319B1. The open meeting to resume in this location at 8:05 PM. In addition to the trustees, in addition to the trustees, the president and the college attorney should be included in the executive session.
All right. Is there a motion? So, second?
Who's winning the game?
Second.
Second? Who? Does it close? What quarter are we in?
Fourth and seventh second quarter.
All right. All in favor? I'm not going to get there. It's a great bit. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are now back in session. No action was taken, but we do have a motion to place in front of the board, so let entertain a motion.
I don't even have his name. Oh, I move that we hire Dr. Glendon...
Forgy?
Forgy as our new business manager. CFO.
CFO. Is unfair.
He's, and we'll...
It's all going to stay on. Apple will stay on.
Okay. There's a motion. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Yes, second.
There is a second discussion. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay. All right, motion passed.
Oh, she's here.
Oh, there she is, sorry. You just didn't...
I didn't know you were going to extend it, so I thought, well, I'll be safe.
Okay. With that, we have completed our today's agenda and may all catch the second half. Go, 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 Stevens. So thank you all very much, and we'll see you in October.
When I grow up, I want to save lives like a superhero and show up when people needed me.
When I grow up, I want to be a police officer, and I want to protect people too.
No matter what it is you want to achieve in the future, your journey starts here.
When I grow up, when I grow up, when I grow up, I don't know what I want to do when I grow up, but I know I want to go to college.
Dodge City Community College, adventure awaits.